Okay, okay. Well, if you have. Got some feedback. Your speech is very clear. Okay, greetings, everyone. Uh, this is the Sun Village Town Council Monthly Meeting, Fourth Monday of the month. It is May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. Can y'all hear me? Can I get a thumbs up? Okay, good, good, good. Um, my name is Ansero Mohammed. I am the current mayor of Sun Village and president of the Sun Village Town Council.
Hi, greetings, everyone. I am Jamila Towns, Recording Secretary of Sun Village Town Council.
Hello, I'm Saleek Webbell. I am the Correspondent Secretary for Sun Village Town Council.
Greetings, everybody.
Hey, greetings.
I was kind of coming in and broke up, but I'll introduce him later.
Good, oh. Hey, everyone, I'm Quincy Hooks, the Parliamentarian of Sun Village Town Council.
We couldn't hear you cue.
Okay, oh.
Think it's your mic.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone, I'm Quincy Hooks, the Parliamentarian of Sun Village Town Council.
Okay, okay. And remember that you're not here, uh, Sun Village Town Council. What most of the day, he's on the train, he's broken. Uh, and, uh, we also have some other people here. I would like to. Our liaison, you know, this is Charles Boswick. Got anything to say to say? Okay, yes, yes. Um, so once again, this is the monthly meeting, which occurs on the Fourth Monday of every month of the Sun Village Town Council, and we are here to discuss a few things, and we have a few announcements. Um, those announcements will be categorized in old business and new business. Okay, so, uh, we did not meet last month in, in April. Um, prior to that, when we met in March, there were some things that we discussed in our meeting. And, um, the last things we did discuss was an agreement, a memorandum of understanding that we have uh, with, uh, Palmdale, the city of Palmdale. Um, so that is part of the old business. And the new business will be, uh, uh, speaking about our new or additional meeting that we're going to have that will be on the Fourth Sunday of every month, okay? So, um, let us open it up, let's open it up. So for the old business, I had discussed some things, I said some things last month, I'm just gonna reiterate them. Um, the past couple of months that we were uh, on a small hiatus, we did, uh, amongst the council did have small meetings about that, uh, particular document and the area. Um, uh, my viewpoint on it is that we are at the last end of that memorandum of understanding. It, it was a ten-year contract or it had a ten-year, it's a ten-year agreement. It was in September of twenty, uh, it would be up in September twenty-twenty-four. It was, it started in September twenty-fourteen. Um, uh, my standpoint on it is that, um, Sun Village had had to come to some kind of grips of how we're going to be represented. Um, we know that we, the Sun Village Town Council, this current administration was installed under a form of, uh, emergency. You know, Ms. Magdalene Lawrence, who signed that memorandum of understanding, uh, had us installed under that, under that emergency type of power. Everyone in the council stepped down and we stepped in, and we had prior meetings before that as to, as to why we were stepping in. The investigations and the, the, uh, the research that we were doing prior to our announcement into this indigenous territory and things like that, so. Uh, if anybody on the council, the Sun Village Town Council has anything to add as to what I said or what I have been saying, the floor is open, uh, for the Sun Village Town Council regarding our old business. Okay. Uh,
This, uh, this is, um, Correspondent Secretary Saleek. Is this referring to, uh, old business regarding the, um, regarding what you're talking about now or just adding something different?
Uh, what I'm speaking about now regarding the memorandum of understanding that we spoke. Uh, prior meetings and, and the, uh, the last public meeting that we had in March.
Okay. Yes, I would like to, uh, to elaborate on that. Uh, this is Correspondent Secretary, uh, Saleek, Sun Village Town Council. Um, regarding the memorandum of understanding, um, wanted to just address the MOU for further understanding. And so, um, Palmdale, um, city officials at the time and Sun Village, um, council members at the time had gathered at the, uh, Palmdale City Council Chamber for a signing of the memorandum of, of the memorandum of understanding, which, uh, Palmdale has agreed to remove its spare of influence in Sun Village. Now, the spare of influence is which an individual or organization can exert powers or control over a particular jurisdiction. So the signing of that document for Palmdale, uh, was Mayor Jim Lefford at the time and his deputy clerk, uh, city clerk, uh, Roxanne Faber. And with the, uh, town council representatives for, uh, Sun Village, you have the president, Magdalene Lawrence, and the secretary at the time was Bernadette Moore, who signed for Sun Village. And we know that the memorandum of understanding is just an agreement between two entities or agreements. Um, and the purpose was to, uh, recognize and support Sun Village's desire to become a city uh, and to remove, uh, the boundary issues related to zoning, the spare of influence from Palmdale and the city pending annexation of, uh, of the area generally located between Palmdale Boulevard and, um, and the alignment of Avenue R twelve and between Eightieth Street East and the alignment of Eighty-Fifth Street. The annexation is just pretty much just a process of bringing property into the city limits. And so, under that memorandum of understanding, uh, the city, uh, acknowledges and supports, which was the city of Palmdale, the goal and objective of Sun Village and to establish themselves as an incorporated city within the city of Los Angeles, uh, which we are not on record, uh, as an incorporated town. We are still, uh, on record as unincorporated. Uh, also, in Sun Village, in, in relation to that agreement, Sun Village also has acknowledged and supports the goals and objectives from the city of Palmdale and its general plan and as it relates to the mineral resources, the extractions designated, um, by, uh, particular location areas, which is located west of Little Rock Creek and the, um, and, uh, pretty much of Little Rock Creek. And so, and also some of the values of the irrigation resources required for economic growth of the regions of Palmdale and Sun Village. So, Sun Village also, and, and Palmdale, they desire to, they equally together desired to remove the spare of influence of Palmdale. And with that, modify the city of Palmdale's spare of influence, including, uh, things like, uh, the pending annexation of general location between, like I said, uh, uh, Avenue R and Avenue, uh, Eightieth Street. So, uh, just to elaborate on that, uh, we as a council and a community, um, are still under the, under the understanding and agreement that we are, uh, unincorporated township. And with some of the, um, agreements that was inside the memorandum of understanding, which was also, um, allowing for, uh, comments by Sun Village on future aggregation mining operations within the city of Palmdale and the supportive, uh, of paving of certain roads in Sun Village as part of the, uh, mitigation resources we, uh, related to the future developments. And so, uh, we would like to, um, just put on record that, uh, that is something that we were looking into, uh, to further understand, uh, in agreements to what resources financially can be backed by the city of Palmdale in regarding road pavements of some of the undeveloped areas in Sun Village.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir, uh. Well put, Recording Secretary Saleek. Um, at first I would wanted to say some things, but as you kept going, you know, uh, I agree with you. Uh, I like how you put that. Does anyone else on the council have anything else to say about this old business?
Yeah, I'm good, I don't have anything to say.
Uh, just continuing, I had a question from Mr. Boswick as I close out on my statement. Uh, and it's Correspondent Secretary Saleek for Sun Village Town Council. Question, uh, regarding, um, any of that, which I stated, Mr. Boswick, regarding the MOU.
Yeah, so that's with the city of Palmdale, um, it's not with the county. Um, and I think it was them mostly promising not to annex into a populated part of Sun Village. Um, yeah, so it's, I mean, it's between the town council and, and Palmdale. Palmdale doesn't have any authority inside, outside its city limits, but I think they're mostly promising not to extend their city limits into the populated part, which they probably wouldn't have been able to do anyway because it requires a vote of the, essentially requires a vote of the residents.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Yes, I, I agree again, you know, uh, it is true. Uh, but for me, you know, from my seat and looking at everything and how I, I tend to wanna look at everything in terms of like, uh, a broader view. Um, I, I see everyone's individuals. But to me, it is just evidence, you know, um, of what we've been hearing from the people who live in Sun Village. Um, the villagers have been saying, hey, um, my addresses have changed, my mail has been rerouted. Um, uh, these towns are encroaching upon us, not just Palmdale, but, uh, Little Rock and, um, Lake Los Angeles, so it, it relates somewhat to the county of Los Angeles, and I'll say that it relates in the way in which the, maybe, how the CSDs are applied. Uh, we know that there was an issue with the boundaries and where, uh, the county wanted to recognize where Sun Village actually was. Um, there was changing of, 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 uh, there was a changing of, of street signs um, and things like that, so, um. Yeah, we just, I'm just driving to show it how it kind of could all connect. Okay, so, um, we had to deal with that in that matter, that's why we, it really is old business. Um, so if doesn't anyone, if anyone doesn't, uh, excuse me, if anyone else doesn't have anything to say about that, we can go on to new business. It seemed like it was some kind of glitch and, uh, did everybody hear me? I saw just everything go blank, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, does anybody else have anything to say about, I mean, within the council? And of course, the county. Yeah, okay, so, um, good input, good input from Mr. Boswick and, um, uh, our recording secretary, excuse me, our, uh, corresponding secretary. Um, on to new business, so there's been a lot of question as to why we have decided to move in the direction of, of indigenous rights for Sun Village. Um, it cannot be all addressed in these types of meetings that we're having now um, on the Fourth Monday. So, the Sun Village Town Council has decided that we're gonna have an additional meeting that's gonna go into the aspects of that. And while we're moving into that, we're gonna be introducing documents, uh, research that we have done, uh, testimony, some of the people that have voted, uh, to be a part of our plebiscite and, uh, things of that nature. So, that meeting is gonna be on the Fourth Sunday of every month. We keeping them close, we're gonna have one right before the meeting on Monday. Um, so, so, uh.
Um, what time will that be, Mayor Ansero, the Sunday meeting?
The, 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 the time is announced, to be announced, but we will, we will. Thank you, it would be, it will be, um, posted and on the website and everyone, all of the members will get notice. Yes, sir, Mr. Boswick, you're on mute.
Are they going to be online as well, virtual as well?
It's gonna be online. Anybody else from the council about that vote? Okay, um, so, um, one other thing is, this is just to the county, and I think she's here, I think I saw the name here. But this is just some, uh, basic county maintenance stuff that I've seen recently in, in, um, the, the central part of Sun Village, it seems to be some kind of like, I don't wanna say it, it is, I don't wanna even acknowledge it as that, but it looks like there's, it's graffiti. And I, and I spoke about the graffiti maybe about six months ago or more, maybe eight months ago, we spoke about the graffiti, who to, uh, report that to, and, um, since then, there's been more, but that wasn't removed, but now there's another set of graffiti that's come through that, uh, it appears to be some kind of rivalry going on. And it's located over there on, um, Ninety-Second Street and East Avenue S-eight. There's a ranch on the corner. Um, and along the gate of the ranch going east towards, east towards, excuse me, west towards, uh, Ninety Street East, it's all new, brand new graffiti, you know? So, uh, that's brand, that's, that's brand new to Sun Village. Um.
I'll have our graffiti abatement team look into it. And I, I, yeah, I, we did, I think in the previous meeting you did mention, and those were cleaned up, so I'll have them address this area.
Okay, hey, yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, so, 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 uh, that was just it from the council, that is the, the old business and the new business, um. We wanna open up the floor, but before we open up the floor, we see that there's a lot of guests that's here. But before that, we want to have the county representatives who are present have their announcements be announced, and then we wanna open the floor up. So, um, however you guys wanna start, it's, it's it's up to you guys.
Hi, this is Josie, we're here with LA County Public Works, and I'm your community services liaison. I actually don't have anything, uh, to report, but we do have Terry Alex and Daniel Bradbury, um, from our Water Works, um, division, they're gonna be giving you some information about the drought and the district thirty, the water supply in the Sun Village. Hey, Terry?
All right, good evening. So, I am Terry Alex, and, uh, Daniel Bradbury is on the call as well. And so, we have a quick presentation, if you don't mind, should take us about eight minutes or so to just present, we wanted to give you some information. Um, this is our first time presenting to Sun Village, so, um, thank you so much for allowing us to provide such, uh, information to you all, okay? So Daniel will need to share his screen, um, for a few minutes, so if you can allow him to do so.
Uh, lined up, uh, I was having some Zoom issues, but I guess we can have potentially anyone else on the call, maybe introduce themselves, but I will get that, uh, lined up, Terry.
Okay. Sounds good, so give us a couple of minutes, please.
Cool, cool, um, while they getting things together, anything, anyone else has anything they wanna? From the county, I mean, of course, okay, all right. Moving ahead on the time. Okay.
So, um, moving forward, if I wanted to reach someone, um, can you put a, um, a contact, the contact info in the chat for me?
Okay.
That's right, the correct information.
Jamila, you got that for her, right?
I'm on mute, I'm so sorry. Hi, Terry, it's a pleasure to meet you, uh, what was your question?
Um, I just wanted some contact, I'd like to have some contact information to, um, just stay in touch, and then if we wanna come out anytime we have some new information to present to your community, uh, we would like to be able to join your meetings.
Okay, yeah. I will, um, I will keep, I'm to, uh, put in a message and, um, give you my email and, and send you, I'm gonna put my email in the chat, okay?
Oh, great, thank you so much.
And then I'll, uh, give you more information.
Miss Jamila, also too, can you put in the chat just the, uh, the website link? So that the website has various detail about when our meetings are, so the website will have.
Gotcha. Yes, sir.
So there's a link on the homepage for the, um, there's a link on the homepage, in any case, whenever we have our, uh, monthly meetings.
And, uh, Terry, just to confirm, I have the presentation queued up, I just need to have a second version of myself be led into the meeting.
Okay, do I see that? So that, that should come to me, right, some kind of notification?
Uh, yes, it's now saying, uh, asking to be, I guess, let in. Okay, I will share my screen.
Okay.
Great, all right. So I think, all right, so I think we can move to the next slide since we've introduced ourselves. All right, so, um, we have several topics that we're gonna cover this, this evening, including an update on our drought, a summary of the district's water usage, and a summary of the infrastructure, and our current efforts to ensure that the district's water supply will remain safe and reliable. We'll also provide some information, um, about available resources, and then we'll take your questions, uh, but we ask you that you hold those questions until the end of this presentation. Next. All right, so first, let's start with some really good news. Uh, recent storms have helped California reservoirs recover, but as you know, California had historic dry conditions from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. Additionally, the southwest US is still in a multi-decade drought, which means that Southern California water challenges are far from over. Next. All right, so as you can see from the map of California, we're now out of extreme and exceptional drought conditions. Next. So as a result of the winter storms, surface water supplies for the state are very healthy. However, one good season of rain doesn't undo prolonged and extreme drought. Statewide, the groundwater supplies are still low, it'll take several years of rain to replenish. Just as quickly as the drought flipped this year, it can flip back just as quickly. So the region must work to ensure we keep up water conservation efforts. Next. All right, so now let's talk about the, um, water use in the district. This chart shows monthly total water use, uh, from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three. As you can see from the green and blue bars, our customers, you, you all did a good job, uh, reducing the water use in twenty-twenty-two, and these trends continued into twenty-twenty-three. But however, as the, uh, weather warms up, we'll see, um, some uptick in the usage, um, which we have seen also in the past few weeks. So that's between forty and seventy percent of the total water use is from outdoor irrigation. So, uh, thank you so much for your efforts to conserving water. Thanks. All right, so where does that leave us for this year? Um, as you know, Governor Newsom rescinded his emergency executive order requiring, requiring water suppliers to activate their Level Two water shortage contingency plans. Um, this means that we've removed our two-day, uh, per-week water restrictions, and you can find Um this means that we've removed our two day uh per week water restrictions and you can find this information. Uh about our updated outdoor water use restrictions on our website, L A County. Um Waterworks dot org, alright, so even though the governor rescinded the orders and. We are still encouraging conservation as a way of life, which helps to ensure that our water supplies are safe, resilient and sustainable. Um even though it's been a very wet year, our weather conditions can quickly turn from wet to dry. So we must be prepared for if the dry conditions return. So we wanna remind you um to conserve water and to also visit our website. Um we have information on there about the low income household water assistance program um to assist folks with pass through water bills. As well as um information about signing up for text alerts or to report water waste. Or obtain information about water conservation and tips, next. Next. Alright, so now let's talk a little bit about the district, um the infrastructure. So the assets that make up the infrastructure includes over three thousand um service connection. Which includes commercial and residential customers, over um a hundred miles. Miles of water main, which moves the water from its source to your home, um six hundred and twenty three fire hydrants, which are essential for fire protection. And over sixteen hundred valves, these are needed to isolate the section of the pipe when work is being done. Five active groundwater wells and then eight pumps which um move water to higher elevation neighborhoods. And then six reservoirs or tanks which provide storage of water to meet peak demand, alright, next. So capital improvement projects, um for your community, the um improvement projects include the Rock Creek Water Line. Um which will improve regional water uh reliability through replacement of aging water lines. On Avenue W eleven, Avenue W fourteen and the Rock Creek Tank Line. The Antelope Valley Regional Water Supply Resilient Project. Um this project will enhance local water supply to mitigate shortages during periods of drought. Through strategic construction of new wells, water mains and interconnection with water suppliers. Um planning studies for this project are expected to begin this summer, okay, next. So um we're always working to make our operations as efficient as possible. So we are actively pursuing grant funding loans and other means to supplement the budget and support critical projects. Next. Alright, so um Waterworks staff work twenty four seven to ensure uninterrupted, safe, clean water. This includes routine maintenance, customer service, water quality, mechanical operations. Uh inspections and repairing leaks. We strive to maintain Waterworks assets to industry standards to ensure they provide the effective cost. Cost-effective service life. Alright, so we've made substantial investments in modernizing our system. Uh which have resulted in more efficient operations and increased up times. For example, we've improved resiliency by installing solar panels and battery backups on. Uh monitoring and communication equipments to ensure uninterrupted operation during power failures. We've implemented a comprehensive asset management program to evaluate risks and priori- prioritize investments. We've also reevaluate, we're also reevaluating and optimizing our maintenance procedures as well. Next. We're almost done. Next. Alright, so before we close, we'd like to remind you to visit our website for information regarding the low. Income Household Water Assistance Program to assist with the passed in bills and to or to sign up for text alerts. So that you are alerted when there's uh emergencies or shutdowns with the water or leaks and breaks. Um to report water waste or obtain information about water conservation and tips, next. So in summary, um the drought is quickly evolving and the drought is quickly um is a quickly evolving topic. So we wanna keep you updated as changes occur and Waterworks is working to improve infrastructure resiliency. And thank you for your continued support and involvement, we are your water district and we exist to provide your community safe, clean water. Both today and for the long term, next. So thank you for the opportunity to provide this such valuable information regarding uh conditions of our infrastructure. And what L A County Waterworks is doing to sustain the system. Daniel and I can um now take your questions if you have any, and then once this presentation, the meeting is over and if you have questions. Please feel free to reach out to me and our information is on the slide, thank you.
Thank you. Wow, wow. That was very important.
I'm sorry, it's an echo, so it's kinda hard for me to understand your question.
I think when one person is talking, everybody has to mute and let that person talk and then you have to unmute and unmute the microphones.
Okay, um so Terry, um is there. A way that maybe you can send me or Daniel, you can send me the maps and um for the regions and. Like that information, like what I see right now with District forty, Regions twenty four, twenty seven, thirty three and thirty nine. Um is that, are you guys able to send us those graphs and maps? I'm sorry, I was muted, yes, we we're able to provide those maps. Okay, and I'll make sure I put that on my list and you should have that either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the from the town council have anything? About the presentation, o- other than that, I already know that I'm gonna say, right?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I think it was good information, I'm glad to hear this.
Yes, very good information, I do have a question, there's um Terry or everyone that's on the meeting, there's um. On this Wednesday, there's the um notice of public hearing in Antelope Valley. Watermaster amend rules and regulations, is who here is attending that? It's at ten A M on Wednes- this Wednesday.
An apologies, uh there is a bit of an echo. Uh okay, yeah, so our. A general manager of uh L A County Waterworks is actually one of the board members of the A V U Watermaster. So he will be attending that and so our staff will also be helping to watch and take notes. Uh for any any business items kinda covered during that meeting, was there uh any specific items? Might have questions for or?
I'm just determining, cause it would take me like ninety minute, uh ninety minutes to drive there. And it's at ten A M, I was wondering if that would be beneficial, cause I was appointed to head of the Border and Power Department. So I'm determining if um is that something um a meeting I should um. Attend, cause it looks like it's about fees and stuff like that, that's I'm just trying to sort that out myself.
Uh as far as the agenda, I haven't checked just yet, I know there is quite a bit of business that they go through, there's a a current. A deficit that they're trying to adjust and so that may be what means are that they're trying to address. Uh but but I know there is a virtual option, if you don't wanna attend in person.
I didn't see that when I looked at it today, but this meeting is for amendments to rules. And regulation place an additional limitation on new production rights and for repayment of delinquent replacement water assessments. That's what the meeting's for.
Got it, got it, uh. Yeah, I guess uh Terry, was there any maybe? Items that you heard from Russ on additional items or or this one is a worthwhile one to attend?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not involved in that, so I'm like. You know, it'll definitely, you you need us to get back to you. Um tomorrow morning.
Yes, yes. I'll put my contact number.
In the chat.
In the chat.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um. One thing came to mind when I was listening to it and I wanna get to the other guest here, but I just wanted to make a mention of that and. That I saw uh the numbers thirty three there, uh it said water district. And then it said regions, twenty sevens, uh something, and then it said thirty three, and it just made me remember. Of a uh. A story that someone in the council, well, not someone, a couple of people were telling us in the council that. Sun Village in the early thirties, oh excuse me, late thirties, early forties. Had ran a district called Water District number thirty three. So I thought it was interesting to see that number there and for Natalie to even say something because when we went. To see about that entity, we went and we reestablished that entity and Natalie is over it. The Sun Village Water and Improvement Company. So um just, that's just something to add there. Um anybody else on the council, anybody else have anything to say about that presentation?
Thank you, uh Terry and uh Daniel for the informed information, appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Yes sir, yes sir.
Thank you for allowing us to present, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, um is there anyone else from the county, Ms Ms Gutierrez?
No, I think that's it, as far as Public Works is concerned.
Alright, anyone else from the county? Of Los Angeles? Okay, um so. At this point of the of the meeting, we've had guests and they've been spectating and listening to the things that we've been discussing. And uh we wanna open the floor up for them. Uh for their questions, comments or concerns, and uh we wanna ask those guests that they keep it down to two minutes. Uh so that we can get everybody through in a timely manner, so any one of the guests that are present. Um you can introduce yourself at this point and open up with your question, comment or concern.
I guess I'll go first.
Okay.
I'm Felisa and I'm with Heart and Solutions uh Management, I do real estate and property management. Uh I'm probably one of the biggest management companies in the Antelope Valley, all the way to Sacramento. And down into A, uh I manage a big portfolio of Section Eight housing. I have one of my business partners and builder on here, his name's Antonio. He does a lot of the container homes, OSHA certified, I'll introduce himself, but he's on here listening. We've been trying to get a meeting with you and it's been very difficult, so uh Jamila said get on and and talk to, talk to you real quick. Uh we have a lot of developmental ideas, I also have a nonprofit in housing, um. Like I said, I do a lot of Section Eight and that's where the majority of our people are indigenous, I'm indigenous as well, our indigenous people. You know, reside, so I help a lot of those uh that demographic, I'm part of the tribe in Ninoch, uh Chief Rashid. And my background is holistic healing and things like that. But I got into real estate and started flipping apartments and developing and working with private money and. Just I love real estate, all things real estate, um I also have my hand in corporate funding and um. Just old world knowledge of money and uh financial programs, so that's what I do and uh. We wanna develop, we wanna build, we wanna create business, we we have our plans together and I'll let Antonio um explain what he does and uh. Yeah, that's what we're looking to do, so.
Great, thank you so much, Luetta, I appreciate you, and whatever like information or website that you have. You could put it in the chat so everyone else can have that as well, okay?
Yes, thank you, thank you for that, and um I do know that you were trying to. Get with me and I've been really, really busy, but um. I got you, we're gonna, we're gonna talk.
Fantastic, I know, um I'll just keep it very short, as a lane developer. I uh my name is Antonio Quinones, I own my own technical training school and OSHA compliance company. I am OSHA certified and I'm also certified with N C C E R out of Oritro, Florida. And the Home Builders Initiative out of New York, New York. One of the biggest things that I see is we build homes incorrectly, we don't build them for longevity. So that is why I like the container homes, as we can start transitioning that generational wealth. To our heirs that follow us, legacy, um that is one of the reasons why I like it. Why I like out there is I just have some questions, I know that I heard out of this already tonight. Is um you have a ten year coming up, do you, how do you see, do you see? Sun Village becoming incorporated, become its own town, will we have access to Waterworks and? And sewer lines and everything, are you really wanting to develop it and make it that? Uh I guess those are all questions that, you know, we can either sidebar or anything like that. I am willing to sit down with you, I am coming out at the end of June to uh just try to meet with some people and really try to. Get a good feel of the area, so um yeah, I'm open, I'm ready to work.
Yes sir, thank you for that, could you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I am uh.
Thank.
Trying to find, but if anybody else on the council has anything to add about what uh has about the. The with the developers, uh Ms Gonzalez and. Her business partner is Preston, you can have any, you can speak now, while I get this in there.
I just wanted to say thank you, Antonio, for joining and um also put whatever information about your business and stuff like that. Also, um um you can go to our website and we have a area where you can fill out comments and concerns, questions. So we could just have that, um you know, on record of what you wanna talk about, um.
There we go.
And go onto our website, but um definitely we can follow up with you, okay?
Thank you, thank you Antonio, uh this is of course, correspondent secretary, uh Saleh. Uh yes, I'm happy, um I'm glad you mentioned that, yes, we are, you know, uh as the. Unincorporated incorporated area as it develops, uh you know, there is. Particularly zoning for manufactured homes, older homes, possibly container homes, so those are things that we. We do look forward to looking at to see um what developments can happen, what type of uh inspiration we can get from um. Our developers and ideas, but yes, so we will be in contact uh with uh. Future and present uh development ideas.
Yes, I would also add, thanks, thanks for the information and I would like to have a follow-up with you guys. With the information and, uh, just get more into and see what you guys have and the, the develop that you guys um, do and stuff, so.
Let's see some good info in the chat. I'm making sure we got it. We got that? Jamila, all the, uh, information? In the chat? Antonio? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, yes, thank you for that. Uh, there was a lot of things that, that you mentioned that uh, we, we have interest in, so hopefully we'll get to uh, seeing what we can manifest with that. Um. Anybody else, any other guests that are here? Do, do you have anything to say? Anything to ask? Um, and like Jamila said, oh, excuse me, am I interrupting? But, uh, like Jamila said, we do have a part on the, on our website where you can log on and if you have anything that you want to present, uh, you can hit that to us prior to this and then we possibly can have somebody talk to you. And, uh, well, you can just come on and, you know, and come into the open forum. So I think somebody was going to talk.
Hello, yeah, hi, you guys. This is Pickus Money. Uh, how you doing? Um, I was invited on by Harden Solutions. So I was just asking, uh, because I am new, but I have lived in the area around there. I do a lot of different things. What is it that you guys are really focused getting accomplished that you would like some assistance with? Like the main thing right now?
Um, I would say right off the top, success and money.
Okay.
Um. Uh, but you know, I, I, that's a question that, you know, we have bylaws, we have, uh, plan. Uh, we have this big move that we made with the indigenous rights and the international laws that are being applied. So I would say support in that area, moving towards that and helping us with what we're already doing.
Okay.
Hey, hey, success.
Hey, how are you?
It's been a minute. I'm good. Just say hi.
Okay. Anyone else in, in the guest room?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Azora Bra. I've lived in the community for, since I grew up here. And I remember years back where everybody would come out to Juneteenth and it would be a real celebration and I guess my question is what efforts have, in like recent years, it's kind of like fizzled out. And so I guess what efforts have been kind of made to like reunite the community and, um, you know, have that celebration that we used to have at, at the park?
Um. Oh, last week, yeah.
Yeah, so there was a, a big celebration last year. We, we slumped in the COVID years, but there was a big one last year. There's going to be another one this year. It's on Saturday of Juneteenth holiday, so that's the, I think that's the seventeenth, but anyway, it's the Saturday of the three-day weekend. Um, it's, um, at Jackie Robinson Park. And it probably starts at nine or ten AM and it'll run till after dark. And it's free, admission is free. It's, it's, you know, Los Angeles County Parks and Recreation and the Friends of Jackie Robinson Park are putting it on. There'll be music and, and dance groups and probably drum lines and booths, you know, both, uh, nonprofit, you know, help organizations and I'm sure there's going to be people selling clothing and crafts and all that kind of stuff, because that's what happened last year. So again, it's the Saturday before the holiday. Um, I guess that's June seventeen, at Jackie Robinson Park.
Okay, yeah, because I just, I haven't seen it promoted anywhere or like nothing really being shared about it, so.
Yeah, I think it's on Facebook, but you know, it's hard to get the word out to people anymore and I think there's, there's either flyers out now or the friends are going to be putting them out pretty soon. Um, but I'll, I'll check with them. We have regular meetings with them, so I'll check about what's going on, but yeah, the, uh, it's the, like I said, it's the Saturday before the holiday.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got anything to add to that Jackie Robinson? Celebration, oh, excuse me, not Jackie Robinson celebration, but Juneteenth celebration?
Yeah, it was really a deeper question about, um, region, community. So it seems, um, you know, I guess that's why I'm here. You know, you guys are doing your thing in Sun Village. I don't, I don't all quite understand all the ins and outs, but, um, I want to support, um, I'm looking to network to connect, reconnect the Antelope Valley kind of.
Yes, ma'am. Can, um. Uh, there is somebody, I don't want to call on them, but I know we do have some things in the works, um. I wanted to mention something about how Jackie Robinson and Jackie Robinson Park kind of became the centerpiece or like the, not the focal point, but just like a, has a, a lot of energy surrounding it. And, um, I think it was in sixty-five, I'm not sure, sixty-three, sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Okay, um. This is around a civil rights movement of, um, our people. And, uh, Jackie Robinson, you know, he was in Sun Village, like he was like, this, this park is the only park that he had ever known of. It's the first Jackie Robinson Park. Um, so it has a lot of, uh, significance. Um. In that in my studies, when I was studying Sun Village and still, and I'm studying Sun Village, I, I uncovered a lot about the founder of Sun Village. His name is, uh, Melvin Ray Grubbs. And, um, it's a lot of untold stuff about him, like where we found, um, his grave, uh, the genealogy research that we somebody, the genealogy research that we we uncovered about him, like where he was born. He was actually born, uh, in a tribal or Indian township in Oklahoma in, in the year nineteen hundred. It was actually, it was called Oklahoma Township twenty-seven. And, um, he was twenty-one years old when he, when the, uh, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Somebody's coming in a little late, uh, you know, at the end of the meeting, but, uh, um, from my, from what I'm reading, I'm reading his, his information and I'm seeing, you know, him being the age that he was and him leaving Oklahoma to go to Chicago. And this is when a lot of people think his story starts. They say he was a black lawyer from Chicago who became a real estate investor. That's what pretty much they know about Melvin Ray Grubbs, but they don't know the, the backstory. He actually, uh, left there, uh, Oklahoma and went to uh, Chicago and became a lawyer and a real estate broker and real estate agent. Left Chicago and then went to Sun Village. Um. We know that he purchased the land, eh, that was once called Little Rock and renamed it Sun Village. Um, we know that there is indigenous and tribal connections to this establishment, to his town. And so it is like the, uh, the one, the black, the story of the black towns who were separate from the United States before integration happened is where I'm getting at and how sixty-five was that pivotal point in history. Uh, that is when the Civil Rights Act, uh, was signed by, uh, I think Dr. King. Uh, maybe it was sixty-eight, I'm not sure. Well, he, he, he was assassinated in sixty-eight. But there was a lot of changes going on regarding black towns and how our people were integrating or being integrated, you know, uh, around that time in nineteen sixty-five, so. Uh, Juneteenth being, uh, particular holiday and then being coupled with Jackie Robinson Park, I just wanted to add that you know, that, that nineteen sixty-five was that time when I think that a lot of people kind of began to forget about the founder of Sun Village and why he was there. Um. So, yeah, uh, that's enough history for me. Uh, anybody got anything to add?
No, I know that, uh, information like this will be continuous on the tribal township. I'm sorry, the tribal council meetings will be, um, also, uh, expanded upon.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh. We are, it's, it's, we hit an hour already and it looked like we covered everything. Um, I thank everybody for all of the, the input. I mean, the Water Works, um, the, uh, the, the developments, the, the hopeful future developments, the container homes, those type of things, solar paneling. These are the type of things we want to look in and, in the future because like frankly, like I, I, I know a lot of things have happened in the past with Sun Village, but I'm constantly thinking about how we can do stuff and ahead of this and not complain about the past, but like keep that in mind, like so it don't ever happen again, but move forward with what we have in mind, that's in our hearts and that's with, uh, along the bylaws and the constitution of Sun Village. You know, we have a whole lot of undeveloped territory in Sun Village. Uh, they say it's about three thousand homes. Uh, three, you know, three thousand parcels or so, uh, I say homes, but, um, of that, I would say of the territory of Sun Village, maybe, I don't know. Only twenty percent of Sun Village is really inhabited. It's so much more land going east that, that, that can be developed. So when I'm listening to these presentations, I just listen into what can possibly happen with the rest of our territory. Um, so somebody's not on mute. But, um, once again, I thank everybody for coming out. This is the Sun Village Town Council meeting, uh, from May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. I am Master L Muhammad. I'm the mayor of Sun Village and the president of the Sun Village Town Council. Um, if any of the council members want to say goodnight and sign off, but if not, everybody goodnight, goodnight. Thank you. Thank you for coming on.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Me too, thank you. Goodbye, Daniel.